All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. There was no action taken during executive session. We will continue the general session of the meeting at 6:30. So y'all got quiet and now y'all can talk again.
Glad to call this meeting, York School District One Board of Trustees General Session to Order. If we could begin with the invocation by Pastor Dave Hall, Filbert Presbyterian Church, York.
Good evening. Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, you are the truth, the source of all truth and knowledge. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. We ask you this evening to lead our school board in their labors, grant them wisdom and the oversight of our district. As they carry out their business, give them success. That true knowledge may increase among us, that all good learning may flourish, that with knowledge there might be humility, and with humility there might be love demonstrated in service to one another. We ask your blessings on all those who teach, that they might not only impart information, but also impact lives and build moral virtue. Give them endurance as this difficult task grows more challenging each year. Help them to know both their subjects and their students well, so that a wise grasp of both would lead to success in the classroom. Guard them from the heavy burdens of unspoken expectations and give them encouragement, that they might see the fruit of their labors through the progress of their students. Bless our administrators, that they might know how best to lead, support, and encourage those in the classroom. Give them unity of purpose and help them to cultivate an environment of cooperation. And grant them the ability to always see the individual students, who are represented by the data and statistics that often dominate the metrics of performance. For the support staff at each school and in our district office, we thank you for them, for the kind faces that greet us in the offices, for those who care for our facilities and our properties, for those who serve meals to our students with loving hearts. And we pray for our students. We ask that you would grant friends for those who are lonely, that you would give refuge to those in unsafe or difficult situations. In a world of distractions and distortions, grant them focus, perseverance, and discernment. Through knowledge, give them wisdom and skills for life, and shape and form them for your purposes and glory. And finally, we ask that each of us would be led to look unto you, the fountain of all wisdom. As the sun illumines all things, so in your light may we see light. I pray through Jesus Christ the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank Pastor Hall. You can now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the record of fact, we do have a quorum with all members present. Present, we do have confirmation of notice to media. Are there any members of the media present this evening? No members of the media being present noted. We do not have anyone to speak in public forum. That stated, we'll move to consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move for adoption.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We'll now move to recognitions for student staff. Ms. Faulkner will assist with the recognitions. Ms. Spangler, sorry, I didn't mention Ms. Spangler, I apologize.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's always nice to see somebody in the crowd. It's nice to recognize our students. I'd like to call forward Dr. John Tharp, who's principal at York Conference of High School, and Coach Jason Lehman. On November ninth, our female strength team traveled to Blackwood High School to compete in the 2024 South Carolina High School Female Strength State Meet. It was a great day for our Cougar family as we were crowned the 4A Female State Champions. Our girls competed against roughly 300 other athletes from across the state. This competition consisted of three events: bench press, back squat, and standing broad jump. They were given three attempts at each event and were scored according to their numbers within their weight classes. These girls have trained extremely hard since June and committed to being in the weight room four days a week all summer, and were coming in the mornings at 7:30 before school. We're proud of their hard work and commitment to this process and their teammates. Girls who've made history. So if I call your name, please come forward. Grace and Carol, and I understand she's playing basketball tonight. Kenley Liming. Maddie Ross. Jessica Merwin. Lauren Henry. Jordan Welch. Okay. Narnia Miller. A.C. Lingerfeldt. Caroline Clark. Brylee Comer. Claire Dye. Hope Henderson. Trinity Staley. Tegan Cowart. Claire Gilfman. Lindsay Morrison. Danny Hagan. Lexi Clark. Maddie Helms. And Brooklyn Carter. Let's give a big round of applause for our state champion.
My other coaches, can y'all please come up? Coach Hagan and Coach Green.
All right, looking here first, and then I'm gonna have everybody behind me. One, two, three. Y'all hold still for just a second. All y'all take your pictures.
Here we go. We'd like to present Miss Cox with her very own state championship ring for the first time ever.
Yeah!
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
That's awesome. I'd like to invite forward Coach Anthony McFadden. Tonight, we'd like to congratulate the following students who qualified for and participated in the 4A State Cross Country Meet. Amical Adams. Gabriella Albert. Kimberly Galvey and Fabian. Joyelle Graves. Amari Van Nostron. Alexandria Welsh. Michaela Thomason. Ava Shook. And Ellis Spencer. Let's give these student athletes a round of applause.
All right, everybody here. Ready, one, two, three. And y'all hold on just a second.
Congratulations again. I'd like to invite forward now Coach Dean Boyd. Tonight, we'd like to congratulate the following students for being selected to the Region Three, 4A All-Region Football Team. This recognition highlights them as the top players in their respective positions within our region. Jonathan Tobias. Jeremiah Ellis. Jay McCoy. Ryan Carter. Tayshaun Freeman. Tristan Snodgrass. Jaden Sanders. And Ziggy Biais. Biers, I'm sorry. Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right. Looking right at you. Ready, one, two, three. Stand there for a second. Okay, thank you.
Tonight, we'd also like to congratulate Ryan Carter on being selected to the All-State 4A Team. This prestigious honor recognizes Ryan as one of the top players in his position across the entire state of South Carolina. He's a work. Well, let's give him a round of applause. And we'd also like to congratulate Ryan Brochu, who was honored with the selection to play in the Navy All-American Freshman Game held early in January. Coach Dean Boyd also received recognition as a Navy All-American Coach, serving as a defensive coordinator for the East Squad. This prestigious game features the top 100 players and coaches in the nation and was nationally televised on NBC on January 11th. Congratulations to you both.
Congratulations to everyone. I don't want you to leave, but if you need to leave, this might be a good time. All right, we'll go ahead with, well, I was gonna ask Mr. Queen to come up front, but he's gonna have to make his way to the front. Whenever you can get up here, how about that? So we'll now move to reports, and we'll have Mr. Kevin Queen, Director of Student Services and Safety.
Good evening. So tonight, I want to bring you a registration update and report from my office. A lot of folks have been working hard to make sure we're getting ready to receive students next year. I told Ms. Cox this morning that one thing in this position that I have quickly learned is that planning ahead is essential, and we certainly are jumping up on top of that right now with looking ahead to how we can serve students next year. So we'll start with our Montessori lottery information and timeline. You'll notice that we held an informational meeting, or meetings, Wednesday, February 5th. We also have a lottery application window that is open now. That closes on February 13th. And after that process and the lottery is drawn, which is on the 19th, there's only that date up there, the notification letters will go out to those who are selected through that lottery process on Friday, February 21st. And just as a reminder, the Montessori program is for our three, four, and five-year-olds, and of course, the lottery is for our, is drawn for our three and four-year-olds for that program. Timeline for our registration dates, and there's been a lot of hands on deck for making sure, as I said, we're ready for that, and I have to give a shout out to Ms. Olmer and also Ms... Elliott, thank you. For some reason, I was trying to say Ms. Jessica King, Ms. Elliott, for all the hard work in making sure that the early connections, mobile school bus is ready to go and be involved in our registration events. So April 2nd, you can see there, they'll be from 9:00 to 11:00 at the high school. April 17th, we'll have the bus out at Lifeway from 46, and then April 30th in the Walmart parking lot from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. Couple other dates I want to point out to you, but I want to come back to the March 3 through 7th in just a moment, so we'll kind of jump ahead to the March 10th to the 14th. That is our 4K and 5K registration and screening. Those will be, that's the week that our elementary schools will be conducting those. March 17th, our Employee Student Transfer Request Online Portal opens. And then on March 19th, we have our ML Family Registration. That is from 11:00 to 4:00 at Bush &amp; Vine. And May, the 1st to the 30th, May 1 is when our district-wide transfer portal opens, and it stays open until the 30th. And I want to go back to the March 3 through the 7th, because we're excited about this. The Registration and Readiness Week is new this year, and the initiative for this week is to design- and the initiative for this week is to design and raise awareness for our families, to support them in registering, particularly our kindergarteners, to make sure that they are kindergarten-ready, that they can meet the profile of a ready kindergarten, and so, and also to help them with the technology part that's involved in the registration process. So making sure that we have some time available to spread that awareness and offer some help. So on March 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00 here at our district office. March 5th, from 1:00 to 4:00 here at our district office. And March 6th, from 9:00 to 12:00, we'll provide in-person support for families who need help registering those kindergarteners. We hope that our community buys into that and shows up. We plan to use our social media platforms, community partnerships, and of course signage to spread awareness and engage our families to come out and take part in that. We obviously know that being accessible and offering hopefully a stress-free environment for some of those who maybe have never registered their kindergarteners or kindergarten student will be helpful. So that's something that we're looking forward to. At this time, that's kind of quick, but at this time, if you have any questions about the registration or registration process, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions or comments? Great information, as long as we can get it out the best we can, right?
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Queen. Now we'll move to Director of Secretary of Programs, Ms. Alyssa Cox.
Good evening, Chairman Childers, members of the board. Good to see you this evening. We are very excited and proud to announce our partnership with Franklin Covey and the Leader in Me Program. It's a comprehensive leadership development initiative and framework that's designed to cultivate key leadership skills in our educators, our teachers and staff, but also our students. And it's a very important opportunity that is of no cost to the district. If you're familiar with Leader in Me, it can be very costly, but there is a private donor that has partnered with the State Department of Education and is funding this. So it is at no cost of our district, and it includes a lot of great phenomenal professional development. We understand that the York County Chamber supports this program as well and has spoken highly of it, and I believe Dean Phel has been in favor of it as well, so we're very excited to have this opportunity. As we talk a little bit about it, it really includes a lot of skills that our industries have continued to indicate, particularly to Dr. Green and his programs, of the readiness need of our students that leave our system K-12, of what those skills are that they need to be prepared and ready to be employable around our county. And so, we're excited that it supports that work, but it also very nicely complements our continued competency work that we have going on in our district. So that is the, pretty much, the initiative. The framework you see here, Franklin Covey's framework operates on what we call a See, Do, Get piece. And at the top, there are really five shifts or paradigms that we really want to make. And one of those is around leadership, that everyone can be a leader, our students included, and everyone has genius or potential. Everyone can have the potential to change, that change really starts within us. And it's empowering students to lead their own learning. So you've heard us talk in the past around our students that are learning attributes of student agency and wanting them to own their learning and know that they have strengths and weaknesses and find their, that intersection of their passion and their strength. And so this will complement that as well. And of course, that paradigm of the importance of education, but partnering with all of those that are involved in a child's education. And so the do part is around those three areas of highly effective practices that our teachers will learn and faculty and staff will learn about, and also our students within leadership, culture, and academics. So we're real excited. We are actually in Year Zero is what they are terming it as, because we're starting a little early, because we've gotten the approval and been able to take advantage of the opportunity. But you can see there, in technically Year One, we start with a small building-level team. So every school building will begin this process as a district named Leader in Me District here. And so they'll all have a small group that they'll begin to work with to launch this. And our building-level principals are beginning this work in the next few weeks in March. Their leaders teams will launch then. And next school year, we'll really begin the Seven Habits, learning about that with only our faculty and staff, some elements within what they call Core One, and then we'll have a lighthouse team that'll really move forward and charge this work ahead. So we're really, really excited about what this is going to do for our kids and how it's going to complement all of our programs. Our schools have received a banner, Leader in Me banner. So after this evening, they are going to be placing those within their buildings where folks can see those when they come in to designate that we are now Leader in Me. So, any questions?
Any questions or comments? Nobody's gonna get publicly how important this is or where this come from. So I don't know what else to say other than what you said, but this is a great opportunity for our district that not many have. So I know you said that kind of, but I wish more people were here to hear that. But, you know, I just gotta say it, just, anybody's watching, this is good stuff, so.
And free.
And free.
Yes, I am. Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. My next, my next item is an action item, as you're aware. And it's that time of year where we present to you our school renewal plans and district renewal plan goals, and we've had some time together to explore those. So we respectfully ask for your approval tonight of those goals.
Sorry, I'm just reading here. Alright, do we have a motion to approve as stated from Ms. Cox?
Some move for adoption is stated.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Anderson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. That has nothing to do with you, that was all me just reading through here, so.
I understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now we have a Director of Human Services, Ms. Jennifer Bowles.
Good evening. Just want to start off by talking about, we're about to start off our hiring season is kicking off really quickly. This past Saturday, we were able to have our district career fair, and it was a great success. I believe Ms. Cox is going to share some official numbers later on in her presentation, but we were especially excited that we had many students that we had visited or met during our college visits to come last Saturday, and which made our heart proud that we made that connection and then they showed up. So it makes you always feel good. Right now, we have about 15 active positions that are open on our hiring portal. If you had noticed yesterday, we had a little glitch. Our applicant tracking system, now this glitch was not on us, it was with the applicant tracking system that we use. They went over to a new interface, and when they did, they pulled in positions way back as far as 2016. So it looked like we had 128 positions open in the district yesterday, and I had a panic attack and told Tim, "Take it down, take it down." And we were able to get it resolved yesterday afternoon. And so now when you pull it up, you will see it looks like normal numbers for York School District One. So put me a little bit in a panic mode. So tonight, though, I have three action items for your approval. My first action item is a Certified Recommendations for the remainder of the 24-25 school year.
So we have Certified Recommendations for the remainder of 24-25 school year. During this portion, if there's any need for executives, or if discussion will have to go into executive session, do we have a motion for approval for, as recommended by administration, for the remainder of 24-25 school year?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Anderson, second by Ms. Johnson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
My next action item is Certified Retirements for the end of the 24-25 school year.
Is there a motion to approve Certified Retirements as presented effective end of 24-25 school year?
Some move for adoption. Congratulations.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson with congratulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Rebels. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
My last action item is a Certified Resignation for the end of the 24-25 school year.
Is there a motion to approve Certified Resignations as presented? Have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Anderson. Have a motion by Ms. Faulkner, which I did not address. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. We'll now move to Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Amy Hagner.
Good evening. I have a couple of action items for you tonight. One is regarding the ESC/TSC Roof Replacement. In December, on December 31st, we put out a RFP for roof replacement for those two buildings. Bids were due on January 22nd, 2025. We had 10 companies bid on ESC and the TSC project. The lowest bid for ESC was Weather Guard at a total cost of $194,275. And the lowest bid on the TSC project was to Interstate in the amount of $292,500. Work on both of those projects will begin sometime in March, and I ask for your approval.
Do we have a motion for approval for Education Service Center Roof to Weather Guard for $194,275? And Technology Service Center Roof to Interstate for $292,500, as recommended by district administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Anderson as presented, second by Ms. Johnson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Next, we have some school board policies up for first reading. We had our discussion on these policies last week at our work session. So tonight, I ask for your approval for first reading for Policy ADF, District Wellness, EFE, Competitive Food Sales, Venue Machines, and the Related Administrator Rule and Exhibits.
Do I have a motion for approval for first reading as presented for the policies and administrative rules and exhibits as stated by Ms. Hagner?
Some move for adoption for first reading of the said policies as stated.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson for first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hagner. Now I move to District Superintendent, Ms. Kelly Cox.
Thank you. First item that I have for you this evening is just an ongoing update. We were gonna jump right on over to Slide 5, because this is the same format in which I presented to you last month. Just wanted to continue to update you, so we are under the umbrella of achievement at this point. Go ahead, Tim. Go ahead, Tim. Thank you. The first item that we have are the Strategic Renewal Goals that you just approved for us. Thank you. It clarifies where we're going as a district. For purposes of our audience here, we are stating that by 2027, 55% of our students will demonstrate mastery in English and Gojarts. And in 2023, the goal was 40, excuse me, 23-24, the goal was 46%, and we did exceed that goal with 48.6%. For mathematics, by 2027, we have a goal of 45% of our students demonstrating mastery. For 23-24, that goal was at 36%, and we fell slightly short of that goal with 34.8. Teacher administrator quality, by 2027, we want 100% of our teachers, our certified staff, receiving at least three observations per semester with specific feedback around how to improve the quality of their practice, more than a sticky note saying "good job", but really specific feedback on how to improve their practice. Our YLE program, as well as our Connect and Collaborate, our Instruction Department, has been working with our principals and our assistant principals on the importance of that quality feedback and how that can really move that momentum forward. For the 23-24 school year, 70% of our teachers were observed at least three times, so we'll continue to track that. Our graduate goal, by 2027, we would like to see 95% of our students graduate on time. For 23-24, that goal was 85.7, and we exceeded that with a very impressive 93.9%. Proud of the work of the high school there. Our GT goal, by 2027, we want 8.5% of our students to qualify for the GT program. And thus far, we exceeded the goal with a 9.6% already. Shout out to the high school for the YCHS Spotlight, which is the most recent one that we have held. And reminder that the next two spotlights, next three spotlights, the remaining three that we have, I will also point it out to you on your dates coming up, but at your request, both Ms. Sandifer and Ms. Resignio have agreed to adjust their time. So the spotlights will be at 8:00 a.m., not 9:00 a.m. Both of those spotlights will be at 8:00 a.m., not 9:00 a.m. Mr. Greens will stay at 9:00 because there will be no children in the building at 8:00 a.m. Next thing I'd like to highlight for you this evening are our professional learning opportunities. I have two in particular that I'm pointing out. The first one is the Applied Cognitive Science Learning Opportunity that Dr. Dixon will be presenting. It's open to any of our teachers. It will be during the week of intercession on February 25 and 26. I think it's significant to point out that this is their intercession time, and they are off the clock, yet we have already had 20 teachers register. I think that speaks to the dedication of our staff. We also already have seven guests registered, representing Darlington School District and Lawrence 55. So really proud of this learning opportunity, and we'll be providing you an update following this event. And for any teachers paying attention, we still have some, a few seats remaining. So if you're interested, please sign up as soon as possible. The next professional learning opportunity, we are hosting. We're hosting the School District from Montana. They will actually be here with us in the morning. You have a schedule of the day in your board packet for your information. If you are interested, your schedule allows, and you'd like to pop in. We'll be beginning at Jefferson Elementary. We'll be there in the morning for a greet and welcome. That starts at 8:00 a.m. From Jefferson, we'll go over to Hunter Street, and we'll end our day at Floyd D. Johnson. Really impressed with the work that we'll be sharing, this team, and we're excited to connect with the team from Montana. This connection was made through Knowledge Works. That's the organization that we work with for our competency-based work. And if y'all remember Angie Rye, who was here with us for our Community Connection conversations, she helped us make this connection. So we're excited to share what we're doing in our district. Under discipline and safety. Just a snapshot back in time, I wanted you to be able to see how we're doing these. Mr. Queen goes out several times a year, meets with the administrative team of each school, takes a look at their discipline data, what, how many referrals do they have to date at that point, and what are their top offenses? Now, this is dated information. This was back in November of '24. I had presented this to you previously, but I wanted to put it up here as a reminder, because as you'll see in a moment, not yet, Tim, on the next slide, our next round of visits are coming up. The other thing on the prior slide, I'm sorry, Tim, I don't know if you can hear me. I do think it's also important to point out our student attendance intervention plans. You can see that District-Wide, we only had a little less than 40 last school year, 36 to be in total. But as of November this year, we've had 107. That does not mean more students are absent. We are being more intentional about developing the plans and ensuring that we are working with our families to ensure that our chronic absentee kids have a plan developed and we're getting them here in school. A big shout out to our social workers that have worked within Brian Griesen's office for the work that they are doing, helping us develop these plans. It's really important if we're gonna imp- It's really important, if we're gonna improve our student achievement, kids need to be in school. So parents, anything that you can do to help us with that is also greatly appreciated. The final umbrella for the evening uh, is our recruitment and retention. So taking a glance at last Saturday, we did host our recruitment fair. We had forty-six attendees present for a total of sixty-eight interviews. And you can see several folks interviewed at multiple schools, because they really wanna get in the district. And we had four different universities represented, Lander, South Carolina, Winthrop, and Calypso. Uh, we also had multiple school districts represented. I'm not gonna call them out, because those are folks that are looking to perhaps come here from their home district. Uh, so we were very excited to have multiple districts represented. Shout out to Ms. Bowlen and her team for the hard work in organizing that, as well as all of our folks here at the district office and principals, uh, who had very nice groups of people present to conduct the interviews on site. Unless you have any questions for me, that's the information that I have for you this month, in terms of an update.
Do I have any questions of Ms. Cox for the update? Thank you, Ms. Cox.
Thank you. The next item that I have for you are the Slate of Administrative Recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So do we have a motion for administrative recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, uh, as presented?
Need to accept a recommendation from Superintendent Cox?
Have a motion by Mr. Rebels for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Faulkner. Any need for discussion? We need to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
The final item that I have for you this evening are our list of upcoming dates. Uh, the first one that I'd like to draw your attention to is our meeting next week. Yes, we have had a run of three weeks straight. With the intercession, we moved the work session up one week, so that y'all were not meeting on work session, um, excuse me, on intercession. We would like to make that a called meeting, uh, as Ms. Bowlen has a couple of more applicants in the pipeline that we wanna get approved as quickly as possible. Following that, uh, later next week, we will head down to Myrtle Beach for the School Board Association Annual Convention. And it is my understanding that all board members, except Mr. McSwain, will be attending. Um, Mr. McSwain had a conflict and was not able to join us. The next date that you have is March the fifth. That is our school, school spotlight with, um, Harold C. Johnson. If you're on the online version, the times are correct. If you have a printed version, uh, those times need to be adjusted. They will be eight to ten AM. Come back and, come back on March eleventh for our regular school board meeting. March nineteenth will be our Professional Collaboration Day. That's the early release day, in order for our teachers to have their collaborative planning time. And then again, with the work session on March the twenty-fifth. Um, I will go ahead and point out, although it's jumping into April, uh, the next spotlight will be at Ms. Resignio's school, at the Intermediate, and that is also at eight AM. That's what I have for you this evening, unless there are questions, I think.
Do I have any questions of Ms. Cox? Did I have any additional information? Needed or questioned? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session for superintendent evaluation?
So move.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. We will now go into executive session. Thank y'all.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Anderson, have a second by Ms. Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're now out of executive session. Uh, no action was taken during the executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Okay.